Would they ask everybody to please rise to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, united in the Constitution of Liberty and Justice for all.
Thank you very much. Council, we have an agenda in front of you. Looking for a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved, Mayor.
Moved by Councilman Mofera. Seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Councilwoman Hanson, excuse me. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Stoltz?
Here.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Mofera?
Yes.
Mr. Muzin?
Yes.
So carried six zero. Council, we have minutes in front of us. September seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, executive session. Looking for a motion to accept as presented?
Mayor, so moved.
Moved by Councilman Muzin?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman, Council President? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Muzin?
Yes.
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Mofera?
Yes.
So carried six zero. September the seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, public session. Looking for a motion to accept as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Council President, seconded by Councilwoman Blue. Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Mofera?
Yes.
Mr. Muzin?
Yes.
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Mazur?
Yes.
So carried six zero. Next on our agenda, the presentation, I Care. With Dave Coats coming forward. Handle that, right, Dave?
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council members.
Make sure that mic is turned off, please.
Can you hear me? Is that better?
You've got to speak right into it, I can't help it.
How's that? Is that better?
Active.
Okay. I was afraid the car was going to break a finger now. Thank you. My name is David Coats, I'm a Hightstown resident, but I'm here tonight as president of a newly organized group, I Care, East Windsor Hightstown. We're a nonprofit five oh one C three organization. And we got started more than two years ago. But at that point, we were incorporated, just a few people, and gradually we built up. And we had built, we felt, because of the events that happened a couple of years ago. We've had a number of our kids, and I say kids, you know, people in their teens, people in their twenties, killing themselves. Either with heroin, fentanyl, or by, you know, just suicide by other means. And it was a wave of death that, in my experience, is just unprecedented. And unfortunately, since then, there have been more added to that number. So there were different conversations happening in different places in our community. And when I say our community, I don't mean just Hightstown, we live in a larger community. And we decided that we needed to do something. So something took the form of having conversations. First with Family Guidance about how to get counseling and support and education services into our community. Services that a generation ago were there, but which have disappeared. We used to have Family Services Agency of Princeton that morphed into a group with a different name, but they owned a house in town that had a full range of psychological services, a variety of other services. They had a million dollar endowment, they had built it, they went under in two thousand and seven. Jewish Family Services at one point had an office in town. That disappeared, probably a dozen years ago or so. And subsequently, you know, the Great Recession, all sorts of things, I don't know all the causes, I just know that bad things started to noticeably happen. So we decided, as a group, that we wanted to try to get these services back. And the good news is they are back. Okay? We had a lot of help from a lot of people in getting there, a lot of encouragement, including from Mayor Quatroni. I met with him a number of times when this was under discussion, and he was always very encouraging, and that's appreciated. The council has helped because you passed resolutions giving us back the fees that we paid for various permits, and that's appreciated. We are now open, we had a ribbon cutting the other day. Your council president was there, and his role as an architect is, he was able to help us out, and the mayor was there, and it was really quite an occasion. What we are going to be offering, and I say we loosely, it's a county grant, it's now a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And Jewish Family and Children's Services is the professional provider. We started with a grant last year, about half that amount. We started at two days a week at the YMCA, which you've now bought. The provider was Family Guidance. Well, we found out in the same week that you had called to Y, that Family Guidance was going out of business. So we had to find a new provider, we had to find a new location. We're at one thirty-three South Main this summer, with the help of Fly High Kobe Baptist Church, which has given us a very favorable lease, and various individuals raised about ten thousand dollars, and with the help of Joe Manino and his construction crew, we were able to transform that space. And services are now going to be offered. It's no longer two days a week, it's four days a week. Why is it four days a week? Because there's a need, because the demand is there. When last we were open, we had hiatuses several months ago. We were at three days a week offering services, and we had a waiting list. So the county recognized that this is an underserved proportion in the county, they recognized the need, they recognized it very forcefully when we had a meeting, some of you attended, at Hightstown High, about a year and a third ago, let's say, May two thousand and seventeen, which about two hundred people attended. And that made a huge difference. So I think this is making a difference in the lives of our young people who have problems they don't know how to deal with, and their families which are confronting situations they're not equipped to deal with. So I want to thank you for your support, I want to get the word out. We're going to be, have a table in front of our place at the Harvest Fair, I hope you stop by. But anyway, and if anybody wants to write a check, we wouldn't object to that either. So anyway, thank you, and Keith and Beth Jackson are here tonight, and Amanda's here, great. So Keith is going to be sending a few words from his perspective, and thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, David. Yeah, my name is Keith Jackson, and been a resident in Hightstown East Windsor Community since nineteen seventy-four. I think I was two years old at that point.
Not really.
Anyway, unfortunately, you know, nobody, being a member in this community and understanding that, nobody is immune from devastating effects of mental illness and addiction, whether you suffer yourself, or somebody in your family, or somebody you know. And unfortunately, the entire community is impacted when people suffer from mental illness and addiction. I Care was really a very grassroots movement. We came together, a lot of people in the living room, over the kitchen table, talking about the problems in the community, and, you know, if you have empathy, you want to do something. You know, you hear about it, you see it, and you say, somebody needs to do something, something needs to change. So a group of community people got together and started to share ideas and pool our resources, and the end result of that is I Care. Now, I Care is a volunteer five oh one C three nonprofit effective July two thousand and eighteen, made up of, governed by board of directors, made up of community members such as yourself, everyone from Hightstown East Windsor Community. And our core mission is to acquire the funding necessary to provide frame accessible services for mental health and substance abuse in the community. Unfortunately, those most impacted are youth aged twelve to twenty-five. So, you know, we get together, we incorporate it, through the help of a lot of people, we've been able to put together a model that is now currently delivering services. Since we started, we've seen over thirty-eight individual people. This is one-on-one counseling, free and accessible, and primarily youth, but also families that suffer can also make an appointment and show up. So, you know, we have open doors, we're really looking to make a difference, and we feel that we are. As we move forward, though, even though we've had success in the short term, right, our goal is to build a long-term sustainable model. You see, a lot of these services, they come and they go, so we are really focused on making sure that the services are here to stay. And in fact, we've expanded the offering from two days a week to four days a week right now, so we are, and I believe that even though we've expanded, we still have a waiting list, so there's definitely a need. And we really appreciate the opportunity to be in Hightstown, the help that we've already gotten from the mayor and the council and the community at large. And we're also here to ask you to keep this alive, you know, we need support, you know, we're primarily focused on fundraising, but it doesn't have to be simply writing a check. I mean, if you're sitting there saying, oh my God, another person died, another person died, this person suffered, this person died from suicide, that person died from a drug overdose, somebody needs to do something. Well, you can do something. You can do something through I Care. You can contact us and say, hey, I want to do something, whatever your skill set is. I mean, if you can write a check for, you know, a couple thousand dollars, that's great. A lot of us aren't in a position to do that, but maybe you can design a website, maybe you can help us with a fundraiser, you know, maybe you can support our organization in other ways, but that's the kind of support that we're looking for. And real briefly, why I got involved was that my son attended Hightstown High School, my youngest son. When he went away to college that year, within a month, he called and he told me, hey Dad, my friend just OD'd and he died, and he lived here in Hightstown. And him and all his friends came back, and to watch a bunch of kids that just graduated high school bury one of their classmates is really traumatic. Unfortunately, a month and a half later, he called again and said, Dad, you will believe this, another one of my friends just OD'd and died. So everybody comes back from school to town to bury yet another classmate. And at that point, he approached me and said, Dad, somebody has to do something. What we have in the place is not working, we have to do something. And him and a bunch of his friends approached the school board and asked, you know, isn't there something else that we could do? So this is really an issue that affects the entire community, but fortunately, I think I Care is here to help to be able to do something. So again, if you're ever sitting and asking yourself, my God, somebody needs to do something, isn't there something that we can do? Yes, there is. Give us a call, and we'll definitely put you to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Did you?
Yes.
Is there specific hours that the offices open? Oh, you have a number one here, yeah.
Yeah, there is a number one.
I'd like to put these in Borough Hall and also put the information on our website, so I will reach out to you very soon and get that stuff out.
Next on our agenda is Habitat for Humanity project update. Please come forward, welcome, thank you.
Yes.
Your name and your address, pardon?
Hi, Tony Atacino, East Windsor resident. Thank you for letting me provide an update. We've completed the sheathing and started installing the exterior insulation on the home. We have a roof up, the roofing material is being installed today and tomorrow. After that, we're looking for a deal we can get on siding, and we'll be, we're looking to rent or borrow or buy some scaffolding. And we're largely not so weather dependent anymore, so we're scheduled for every Saturday. In October, we'll be having either a roof build or an open build, as well as several days during the week that we have bills going on.
Could you give us a date of when you think the building will be sealed up for winter, ready for indoor work? It don't have to be exactly...
By the end of October, we expect to have the windows and doors in, let's say, you know, end of October to mid-November, we should have windows and doors in. And after that, we're largely weatherproof. We'll be doing the plumbing rough ends in November, electrical rough ends in November, and then get those inspections done before the end of the year, and hopefully build through the winter.
All right, I'm going to ask my council, do you have any questions for the bet?
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
Is that on both units or just one?
Of the rough ends, plumbing, and electrical, we plan to do them both.
Go ahead.
Both halves of that one duplex that we're working on.
Dave?
Do you have a family yet?
We do not yet have a family selected, we have a number of candidate families that are in the process of going through, but if you know anyone, certainly, please refer them to our website, they can apply to our family selection group. Shortly after we get the one unit done, we'll be looking for families.
I just was concerned about the exterior plywood on the upper floor, it looked really weather resistant after the last fire. Who does that? Anybody? Do you know what I'm referring to?
Yeah.
It's the second floor outside.
He's worried about how long that plywood has been exposed to the element?
Right.
And it hasn't harmed it any, or is it?
I felt like it needed to be replaced.
We'll take a look at it and see if there's any softness in it, certainly we can replace it, so we'll talk to our village supervisor about that.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to have the home being finished and depleted with an exterior that's not...
I don't believe it's an issue there, we'll certainly check it out and make sure.
I'm sure. Anybody else? Thank you very much for coming forward to us. I appreciate that. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have first public comment, number one, any person wishing to address the mayor and council regarding matters on the agenda will be allowed a maximum three minutes for his or her comments. Please come forward, give your name and your address, please speak clearly, we are picking it up on the small microphone, not the big microphone. Mr. Mason?
Thank you, Doug, Mayor, five thirty-six South Main Street. I think it's a good example to have in the future for presentations if the people could stay, because I have a question about the I Care, obviously, anything dealing with helping other people, I'm a hundred percent for. But my one question is, since they are a nonprofit organization, will that be a tax exempt property?
There it is.
Or...
They're leasing there, the Baptist Church, so it's already taxed there.
Hi. Yeah, the building is owned by the Baptist Church, however, it's currently, it also has a tax office next to it. I'm not up to speed on whether the building itself is taxed exempt, even though they own it, the one company's been in there forever, but it's certainly a valid question.
Yeah, it's why I would like to know, because if the church owns it, it doesn't matter if the church is using it for church business, it's tax exempt. But if the church is using it for commercial use, like you said, the tax office and now another entity, then it wouldn't fall under the umbrella of an exemption. So that's why I'm asking if that property now that a five oh one C three is going to move in, if they're going to enjoy the tax exempt status, because as you know, we have enough tax exempt properties, and I think you said that they were in the YMCA? So now that you bought the YMCA, that's off the tax roll, so they went from a tax property to a non-... Okay, well, thanks, I never did this, you know, participation on any other thing, so it's okay, I can do that. My apologies, recently I had a stroke, so I'm having a hard time, you know, getting things out, but I'll get it out to the best that I can. So, yeah, that's all I had on the I Care, and I'll reserve the rest of my comments for the last public comment, thank you.
Thank you very much.
JP, given six oh two North Main Street, several items on the agenda that I just have some questions on. The first one is a formality issue, and that is, under the executive session portion, we're identifying personnel matters as grant writers and professional services, which I would assume would be contractual as opposed to personnel. Personnel, I've always understood, is a personnel matter which deals with an individual who's an employee of the municipality, okay?
Well, that's what this gun gave me.
Okay, but it says here...
The prior employee.
Right, but it says personnel grant writer, and in the packet, we have a contract in here for services for grant writers. So I'm trying to figure out whether or not we're talking about a grant writer who's an outside contractor, which is in the packet, or whether we're talking about personnel, which is an inside person in the borough. I'm just trying to figure, there's a lot of stuff that goes on in executive sessions, which is fine, but if we can't at least figure out what category to put it into, it causes a little bit of confusion. Second issue that I have with respect towards it is, I'm looking at the bills that are being approved for authorization for payment, and I'm seeing that we have one on here for the services for accounting and auditing purposes. And according to the way I'm reading this, I have no way of doing it other than say, it was a bill that was submitted from nine ten to nine twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for audits, three audits, two audits and an additional, additional audit services. So the question it poses is, the total for this go-around is twenty-nine thousand two hundred dollars. Are these quarterly audits, are these annual audits, or are these monthly audits?
Annual.
Annual audits. And I would assume then they must be associated in with certification that you're about to do tonight, too.
Yes.
That's fine. I'm just trying to ascertain what we have, when an account that comes in and presents a bill to organizations generally won, and if they're going to identify it by division, I'm assuming an audit would be of sewer and water and hour, you know, of the borough itself, and an audit of whatever, but this clearly indicates that during the period there were three separate audits, and I'm just curious, just to make sure we're not double billing, triple billing, and I'm assuming you're doing it right, and that's fine. But the way in which it's being shown, obviously generates some questions. And then I know, or I surmise, I do not know, so I correct myself, I surmise that the Tropicana is the league municipalities, the usual, we're sending some people down there, and a thousand dollars for, the Tropicana resort is for a room for three different people. From what it says, all it shows is, it says Tropicana Casino Resort, three hundred and forty-five dollars for the administrator, two hundred and thirty dollars for the mayor, I'm sorry, you don't get a good room. And then we have three hundred and forty-five dollars for a house amount, so I'm assuming if that's the case, we should probably just identify it's the league municipalities, the annual issue.
Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Scott Castor, twelve Clover Lane. I don't have to say anything on the back of JP, he can stand for himself, and he did quite ably. I just had the same concern as one of his concerns. I'm really a student, I would really consider myself a student of executive session, of when to go into a session, when not to go into session, and even though the law may say that there is a technicality that affords you the privilege of going into closed session, there's still sometimes is a way of extending to the public more than just nothing. You can reach out to the public and share the framework of what was conducted in closed session, and you can also interpret the sunshine law very liberally or very conservatively. And when I look at contract negotiations with Robbinsville, or wherever, and I'm not even saying that with Robbinsville, because I can't even tell. If it is with Robbinsville, I don't understand why that can't even be said. If it isn't with Robbinsville, why it's not said with somebody else? I mean, the more information you can give, the more we can feel that you all are transparent, and the more we can participate, even though there's a closed session going on. I sure wish you could come out of closed session and actually give us an understanding of just direction, of where we're trying to go, or some background of where we're trying to go, because it looks like we're going to get, it landed on our lap at some point. And even if it's not landed on our lap at some point, tell us it's not going to get landed on our lap at some point. This is like a black hole, we don't know where it's going, Mr. Mayor, and I shouldn't have to beg for this, I, even with the personnel, professional services and personnel grant writer that JP brought up, that's a red flag staring at at least some faces. It's just questionable, and I wish it could be addressed, I wish it could be cleaned up, even tonight, given that I brought it up, at least, I really would appreciate that.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks.
Jane, will be able to come forward and close the public comment, number one? We're going to go read into ordinances. We have two thousand and eighteen sixteen final reading of public hearing, amending chapter three entitled Public Regulations. Section three dash nine entitled Bicycle, Skateboard, Scooter, Skate, and Roll Play of the Revised General Ordinance of the Borough of Hightstown. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak on this public hearing, please come forward and state your name and address?
Scott Castor, twelve Clover Lane, I almost brought champagne, but decided not to. Thank you again to Debbie, Madam Administrator, for, I think she was the one pushing this, I've never heard that specifically, but I just get the sense of it. You've mentioned it more than once, more than anybody else, so I thank you again. And it just have a, you know, I don't want to see anything fall through the cracks about this, now that it's on the books, or will be on the books, and I'm assuming it'll have some teeth into it, and afford the police department more opportunity, and I'm assuming they'll take advantage of it, and I'm assuming mayor, council will encourage them. And up until now, one of the excuses why the former ordinance wasn't upheld or enforced vigorously was that we had a lack of signage. And surrounding this ordinance, there have been several references to the kind of signage we're going to put up, and I just have a question, I've never seen that kind of signage before, and I was just wondering, I don't want to sound in any way not thankful for this ordinance, I just question, I want to see it go all the way, is that legal to put a sign on buildings promulgating... Is that legal to put a sign on buildings promulgating a restriction like we're imposing here, that once it gets into the courtroom, will be abide by by a judge? In other words, I thought there was a tendency or an expectation to see signs like this on poles that were like on the other side of the sidewalk. Just asking, and I would love to have an answer, it's public hearing time, and I thought maybe this would be the time to ask it.
Well, no signs will be purchased until it's passed.
Why?
I said no signs will be purchased until this is passed.
I'm not questioning the signs.
Debbie can answer.
Purchased, I was asking for a legal opinion on how legal.
It is very legal, as long as we have an agreement with the property owners, which I've already begun, I've spoken to a few of them already. And it does not have to be a sign on a post. The sign can be posted, and that is what we are doing. What we are doing is perfectly legal. You can even paint it on the sidewalk, but that's a big maintenance issue for us, because our small public works.
I don't mean to be argumentative, we can.
No, there are other, other ways, other than just putting a sign on a post, that you can enforce these regulations, such as putting the sign on the building, you can paint, you can paint the actual sign on the sidewalk, but that wears away, and that becomes a maintenance issue for us. So we're not looking at that. But yes, what we're doing is perfectly legal.
When I say legal, and when you say legal, I get it, you can do it.
Enforceable, which is required. I did correct myself.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Look forward to it. Good job. Thank you.
Doug Mayor, 536 South Main Street. Since this one doesn't have a time limit, this is my speed. I'm actually upset by it, and I'm going to tell you why. I've been attending council meetings for four and a half years now, and I heard this man stand up here countless times, asking for an ordinance, something to be done with bicycle riding on the sidewalk. And I heard this mayor say time and time again, what do you want me to do about it, Scott? What do you want me to do about it? So my understanding is that if you can do something now, you could have done something four and a half years ago. The excuses that we got, and I have a very good memory despite what's happened, the excuses that we got over the years was, well, in the area that we want to restrict the signs, being Main Street, which is Route 33, we have to have the permission of the state, because that is the state about to put up signs. And as the Administrator alluded to, the topic came up about putting markings on the sidewalk, and that was refuted, that we wasn't going to do it, because what was you going to do in the winter time, when it was covered with snow or ice or floodwaters? But I heard this man come up, at least 15 times, I heard him come up, and he said you couldn't do anything with it because you had no signs. And I argued back then about that, it's an ordinance. There, there's, I don't know if it holds up in court, but I hear lawyers and judges use it all the time, there's no, there's no acceptance, or there's no excuse for ignorance to the law. So if you have a law on the books, then you can write a summons, and you can take them to court, which I brought up. You've had this law of no bicycles on those specific sidewalks, on those specific streets for at least four and a half years, because I brought it up to you and I showed you the ordinance. But you swore up and down that there was nothing that you could do to it when you berated this man and told him, Scott, we don't have the signs, we can't do anything without the signs. And it's not true. Now you're saying that you're going to put signs up on buildings. I'm half tempted to go down the sidewalk on a bicycle, and when you do that, and fight Debbie in court. I am. We'll see how I feel then. Because I'm going to argue that that is not enforceable, a sign on a private building. I mean, you've got handicap signs that have so many regulations about how high and how far in front of a parking space it needs to be, and now you want to slap signs on buildings? These are the same signs that you want to put on buildings that you say that we can't put other signs up. You can't put, for instance, campaign signs up, you can't put signs of going out of business or things like that, but you can put a welcome to Heights Town in the businesses. So, you know, the sign part, it really, I really wish you would have answered his question because, you know, that's one of the things that you guys have never answered in four and a half years, is how the signs work in this town. You know, when, when we discussed the parking on Railroad Avenue, your Chief of Police said that he could not ticket the vehicles without a proper sign. So do you need the sign? Don't you need the sign? Is the sign proper on a sign post or on a building? And I think you jumped the gun on this because you've had four and a half years and you couldn't even answer the man. And, and that's why I'm upset about it. I'm also upset because of the fact that you didn't do it four and a half years ago. I'm upset with the fact that you're not looking at me, as I'm looking at you talking to me. It's like, you know, I'm bothering you because I'm bringing this up, but what I'm saying makes sense. And you know it makes sense because I've been up here saying it, not as long as Mr. Castor has been. Okay? But I've been saying it a long time. So, the last thing I want to say about the signs is since this town has such a core record of signage, because there's still not any signs, there's still not any signs up in the upper parking lot that we discussed months ago, the signs that were faded, that the council president alluded to, that the borough administrator said that they were ordered or on the way of being ordered, those signs aren't. So it would seem to me, signs are not your strong suit. You have one sign, I remember two year, three years ago, I brought it up, you have one sign in the borough that says, no engine braking, it's right in front of this building, but it's not anywhere else in the borough, and there's other entrances and exits to the park. So does that mean when I bring my truck down the truck route and I hit the brake brake in first gear right past your house, that there's nothing that you can do about it because you don't have a sign right there? The only sign is in front of the building. So I'm upset that you passed this ordinance without answering all the questions that you could have answered to Mr. Castor, without answering any of the points that I thought of, which is the time to answer it, without the attention to detail of the speakers, I'm glad that you're looking at him now, but he wasn't before. And it's, and it's really frustrating, it's really frustrating. So I think you should table this, because this has, against what Mr. Castor said, has no teeth. This has no teeth because you haven't addressed signage. This has no teeth because you have no signage. You don't even have signage to put on the buildings. This has nothing from the, I don't even see the Chief of Police here, which he should be here this evening, because this has been a hot button topic for four and a half years, where he told you as the officer in charge as Lieutenant, and then he told you as the Chief of Police, that he could not enforce this ordinance. You've done nothing to this ordinance, other than add a few lines and a few words, but you've done nothing to alter this ordinance that was previously there, that you said that you couldn't enforce it then, which means you can't enforce it now, which is this is a bunch of window dressing to say, hey, look, we're doing this, or we're doing something, and you're not doing anything. And I would have appreciated at a final hearing, where the council was supposed to talk about it, where you're supposed to answer a lot of questions on it, that our Chief of Police would be sitting here and tell us, is it enforceable, or is it enforceable, or at least have our attorney tell us, tell us if it's enforceable, or not enforceable, because I'm confused by our Chief of Police saying that on Rogers Avenue, without proper signage, his police officers couldn't enforce that ordinance. Seems like there's ordinances in this town that can be enforced at your discretion. But I thought an ordinance was a law, and a law is supposed to be administered equally to everybody, and it just doesn't seem like that in such cases.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jordan Adler, 2 Fryer Court. Just have to add a couple of points, I think everyone covered everything. Appreciate the discussion last week, where the board actually communicated and discussed reasons for or against. And something was left out, which these guys covered, and that's the signage. I know at one point I heard we were going to have kids draw signs and post them in windows. I want to make sure that's not the plan of signage, because I'm no attorney, but I don't think that's going to be enforceable. Second thing, the motion or the documentation that you have there, there's an editor's note that says that the law is you have to wear bicycle helmets. If you're under the age of 18 in New Jersey, that's the law. If you're not under 18 and you're an adult, it's your choice. Now, obviously, if I'm taking a little ride downtown on a mountain bike, I'm not going to wear a helmet. If I'm on a road bike, I'm not going to wear a helmet. But I think we should be factually checking comments that are put into the record to have people vote on, and talking about having zero teeth is your statement from the editor of this document, that everybody has to wear helmets. It's a motorized vehicle, and it's a bicycle. Second issue I do have is, I guess relating to determining, or police determining, how far light shines on the bicycle, front light or back light. Seems a little subjective of what 500 feet is, and haven't had any clarification on that remark, versus 300 feet on the back. Or that they can use it after it's been inspected by an officer. And as someone just brought up again, where is the police chief? I caught a meeting that I couldn't attend two weeks ago, where your borough administrator made a statement that the guy that asked the question wasn't here, that's why he doesn't know, he wasn't at the meeting. Well, I'm sorry, like many people in this room, we decide when we have time and family commitments and coaching commitments and work commitments, when we can make every single decision. So I didn't appreciate that comment, and I've come to two more meetings in a row, and not one since a police chief showed up to answer questions of what's enforceable or what's not enforceable. And I would ask that the others, make the decision to table it until you can get your police chief to come to a community meeting and answer questions from the residents. It's pretty simple. And you can't pass it as it is with no signage, because it goes into effect immediately. And for that reason alone, please don't, please don't pass it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Council, Chalky Police, 136 Broad Street. Just wanted to say, I'm actually, I don't know if everybody else that spoke about this issue is a regular bicycle rider, but I ride a bike to work every day, actually ride it four times a day, I come home for lunch, so. I'm very familiar with the traffic laws and whatnot when you ride your bicycle. I don't have Doug's enthusiasm on the issue, I actually kind of like the ordinance. I'm not totally confident if he was for it or against it, but I agree with him when he says that something should have been done a long time ago. Like I said, I ride bikes all the time, in other towns, I've got tickets to riding on the sidewalk, you know, it's, it's very annoying when you're trying to walk down the street and people are whizzing by you on bicycles, you know, it's not only is it not safe, but I think it could hurt the businesses on the main fair, so. Just want to say, I think this is a positive step, and I'm glad they were taking it, or I hope they were taking it, and I'd like to see what goes.
JP, given 602 North Main Street. I think the ordinances is definitely something that you want to work on, it's something that should be gone over, but I honestly suggest tonight that you table it. There are too many defects that are in it, some of which have been mentioned earlier. They violate the law, they're unclear, they're not enforceable. When you do an ordinance of this nature, it's, it's responsibility of the governing body with legal advice to make sure whatever is in the ordinance is not conflicting with any other higher authority. That would be the county, the state, or the federal government. Some of the information that's in the ordinance at the present time is derived from Title 39, which is the motor vehicle, it's a bicycle. You're establishing new standards. You are allowed, as a governing body, to establish stricter standards for the community. But once again, you've got to remember, when you allow a 55 mile an hour speed limit, as an example, and some officer goes out there and enforces it at 56 miles an hour, and irritates the hell out of the community, because everybody else is doing 65 around it, you're enforcing a rule that you, that someone passed. So the problem is, if you don't want to have an issue later on in litigation, you should scrutinize all ordinances. Resolutions are a different story. Ordinances need to be scrutinized for compliance with prevailing legal authority and requirements. This is a great example for you to work on. You've been playing with it for four and a half, five years, I think it has a lot of merit, but I think it needs to be vetted properly. And if nothing else, I think you can send it to the League of Municipalities, you can send it to the Chiefs of Police, you can send it to a number of organizations who'll be happy to give you information on it. You can send it to the State Department of Transportation, because it deals with roadways, and say, hey, does this comply, is this conflicting, and watch for the red lines to come back. I don't want the borough to get dragged into court and have to defend itself, we spend way too much money on litigations at the present time, in the last couple of years. We need to avoid litigations if at all possible. So the best way to do it is before we codify something as an ordinance, let's make sure it's enforceable and it's not conflicting. So I strongly suggest that you table it, give it one more chance, check it with some higher authority, get it back, if everything is fine on it, more power to you. If corrections are required, make them before you pass the ordinance and make it law. Okay? It's a statute at that point. Appreciate it.
Thank you, JP.
Scott Castor, 12 Clover Lane. Is this a fair question? The ordinance that passed tonight, I assume is in effect in two weeks from now, is that...
Upon advertising. It becomes effective immediately upon advertising that it was adopted.
Which is when?
Friday.
So Saturday morning, signs will not be up, but can, can I expect the police to issue a ticket to bike and will it go through?
Yes.
Without signs?
We actually have a bicycle ordinance on the books already.
I know, but you all have been saying for years, Ashley, I was told you're going to order signs, there was a time when you were going to order signs. In fact, I turned, I, I even turned to Mr. Lang.
We did order signs, we installed them, and DOT took them down because they were improperly installed. DOT would not authorize that installation. So they were installed and they were taken down. The whole reason to revamp this ordinance is to make it enforceable. It was, you had to have a license on your bicycle, a kid couldn't ride a bicycle until they took it to the police department, had it inspected, and they issued them a license plate, and they registered it.
But that was only one part.
We're doing away with all of that, making the ordinance enforceable.
I appreciate that. I'm just asking, is it ready to go Saturday morning? And without signs? I can take it, I can prosecute it right to court?
Yes.
Doug Mayor, 536 South Main Street. I'm not going to be long, I just wanted to clarify something. When the question was asked, is it enforceable? You shook your head, no. You shook your head, yes. Can we get a clarification from the attorney? Without the signage, is this enforceable? Thank you. Saturday morning. Thank you.
Anybody else coming forward now?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Well, I would like an answer because...
You're going to get an answer.
Excuse me, public hearing is still open, and if I had an answer, I might know how to respond to it during a public hearing. I like that.
Mr. Riedel, could you give me an answer?
As the Administrator indicated, this ordinance has been on the books for quite some time, and there have been changes, obviously, that have been made with the ordinance that's in front of the council right now. in front of the council right now. The administrator is in the process of ensuring that signs are going to be posted accordingly in order to alert the public as to the requirements of the ordinance. And between the time of the ordinance's adoption and the time of the posting of signs, I will leave that to the police department to determine as to how they are going to alert the public, whether it will be through violations and, and warnings, until such time as an actual posting is made and people are aware of the requirements of the ordinance such that they will actually be subject to fines and, and other remedies at the municipal court level. But we will review the matter with the chief, with the chief, and they will proceed accordingly to notify the public as best they can, so that whatever violations are brought forward to the municipal court level will be enforceable.
I'm smiling again because the background that I see is that it's very difficult for Hightstown Police Department to enforce the ordinance, signs or no signs. When, when there's a bicyclist speeding through downtown Hightstown, believe it or not, they can actually go through downtown Hightstown faster than a motor vehicle sometimes. You can blink and the cars, the bicycle is already a block away. By the time you pick up your cell phone, call for assistance, report a bicyclist. I don't see the kind of foot patrol downtown that we used to see. I don't know how it's going to get enforced. As far as the signs go, we haven't even started, and I can understand why, maybe, but we haven't understood, haven't even started approaching the businesses. I think this by itself is a project and a half. We haven't bought the signs. I can remember a year ago, or two years ago, maybe, turning to Mr. Lang and asking about the sign at this time of the year, and the answer was, we're going to wait until the magic date, November, when we can, when we can transfer money from one line to another. I don't even see that happening. I see it happening next year, where we at least begin. So I see some inauthenticity and vagueness ending. I guess the reason why I get the way I am is because sometimes the only way to get action is to be repetitive and be in your face, because if you're not in your face, inaction doesn't occur. I mean, it was, half of this council has actually told me that there's no problem with bicyclists downtown. Half of this council has actually said that I'm a pain in the neck about bicyclists on the sidewalk. So I don't have too much faith, even though I appreciate forward movement that I think is happening tonight, but when it comes to closing it and putting the nail in it, I think I know how to do things like that. And I don't see it all the time from mayor and council about now, now, living in the moment now, getting it done.
It was once said that I was a facilitator and a communicator, so let me see if I can do this. I think I got a solution to help you guys out, because I know that this is frustrating to you, Mayor, and Council, because you guys have been dealing with this for a long time. The question that I asked was, is it enforceable? I said, you said no, you said yes, and the legal mind said, I'll leave it up to the chief. Can you suspend the decorum rules for a moment? Pick up your cell phone, call our chief of police, and ask him. You don't have to table it that. All you just stand right back on that stage and you say, hey, chief? Can you wait? Probably, you're right, because this is a disaster, but anyway. I mean, I think, I think you can get that answer. I mean, if the chief doesn't want to be here, or you don't want to summon him here, then the quickest way to solve this is, is a two-minute phone call, because nobody can seem to answer it. Part of my rehabilitation now is I'm supposed to do some exercise, and if I get on a bicycle, I don't want to get a ticket. You know? Nevertheless, it's the hardest there, because it tends to be on the sidewalk. Nevertheless, nevertheless, you know?
Wait until the door is done.
So anyway, in lieu of it, it's been extended this long since there's no signage, since we don't have a chief to tell us, the borough attorney wants to lean on the chief's understanding. And there's a conflict between council and administrator on what is right and what is wrong. Instead of pointing fingers, I would agree with the previous speakers, and I would say, either table it this evening and get everything else worked out, and next time have the chief here, or call the chief tonight and ask him, hey, you know, can we enforce this without the signs? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Public comment, I mean, public hearing on ordinance two thousand eighteen sixteen. Need a motion to move two thousand eighteen sixteen, final reading and public hearing. If I'd like to move it?
I'll move it, as I don't believe there's any discrepancy in our answer. I think it is enforceable as an ordinance.
It's been moved.
And I think we've talked to the chief of police enough times about this ordinance, gone back and forth, amended it, tabled it, and...
It's been moved, like it's been moved. Councilman Montferris, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hanson. We'll go into discussion now. Does anybody like to discuss? Go ahead.
Okay, you're all going to shoot me. You guys aren't. But I am good with the table now that one. I thoroughly read this, thoroughly read this this weekend, and right off the bat, in your editor's note, as pointed out by Mr. Adler, the statute that you're citing does not pertain to icicles. N J S thirty-nine four dash fourteen, thirty-nine colon four dash fourteen point three Q pertains to motorized icicles. The helmet law for a bicycle is N J S thirty-nine colon four dash ten point one. And that law states that a helmet is only required, sorry, Mr. Adler, but it's under seventeen years of age, not eighteen years of age. So right off the bat, you have that. The state statute provides definitions for bicycle. That definition that's in the state statute, "A bicycle should be contained in here," and it doesn't read what ours says. According to the state, "A bicycle means any two-wheel vehicle having a rear drive which is solely human-powered and having a seat height of twenty-five inches or greater when the seat is in the lowest adjustable position." That definition should be contained in here. Another point brought up by Mr. Adler was the rear light. This ordinance, the way it reads now, in section three dash nine point two-two, says the rear light has to be visible for three hundred feet. The state requires it to be visible from a distance of five hundred feet in the rear. So this needs to match that. There are provisions in the state statute for warning signals that should be married in here. If that, you're talking about enforceability, that gives enforceability. According to the state, "A bicycle must be equipped with a bell or other audible device that can be heard at least one hundred feet away, but not a siren or whistle." There's also a requirement by the state of a brake. "A bicycle must be equipped with a brake that can make wheels skid while stopping on dry, level, clean pavement." Yeah, these should be in our ordinance, and therefore, I would like to table it.
Are you moving to table?
I'm moving to table.
We got a little spread. It's been moved and seconded to table. No, prior to that. It was moved, this ordinance was moved and seconded, and now we're in discussion.
Yes, but it's fair under Robert's rules.
Then now it's tabled and seconded.
Correct. Now it's on the table.
And seconded to table. Is there any other discussion on table? Yep, go right ahead, sir.
I've been loosely involved with this for a while, being a business owner downtown and seeing the bicycles down there. And then, then also working with Public Works on the design of the signage, and how we're going to not only have the signs, but a public sort of campaign, mostly on the website, with a photo of the sign, walk your wheels on the sidewalk, kind of a campaign type of thing. I would agree. One more meeting on this one, just so that you can even show people what the sign looks like. I've seen it, and I believe it was at one point in front of council, the photograph of the sign. And then, just to double check, I know the chief talked about it with us when it was, but for the public, and getting the definitions and making sure that we're actually complying with laws that are above us. We're allowed to be more restrictive, but if we're not as restrictive as the minimum, we should make sure that that's correct, too. Which admittedly, I, I didn't look at that level, but Susan looked it up, I think it's worth tabling at one more. Make sure we're going to get it right.
Any other discussion?
It's more of a question for Fred. Susan brought up a bunch of state requirements that are in our ordinance. Is it necessary to put every state, I mean, you have a state requirement, we're subject to state requirements, we have the ability to make it more restrictive, but if we're matching the state requirement, is it required that we duplicate all those requirements on our own ordinance? It's just...
No, it's not required to duplicate, but if there are any inconsistencies, they should be addressed.
Well, yeah, I'm saying, you brought up things about the things we just don't have, including your name. I'm asking, is it really necessary to put it in there since it's already part of the state ordinance?
If there's already a state ordinance, then violators can be charged under the state.
Okay.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to table. That means a yes vote would table. Does anybody have any further discussion or questions? Maverick?
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Reserve?
Yes.
Mr. Mopera?
Yes.
Mr. Muzin?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
So carried six zero, tabled to the... First reading and introduction. Refunded bond ordinance of the borough of Hightstown and County of Mercer, New Jersey, providing for the refund of all or portion of certain water sewer utility bonds of the borough, appropriating one million eighty thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issue of not to exceed one million eighty thousand dollars in water sewer utility refund bonds of the borough of Hightstown for financing the cost thereof. To promote to introduce, move by Council President, second by Councilman Montferris. Any other discussion? Maverick?
You would like to address?
Yes. Take the microphone, please. Slide it forward, that's it. Up Georgia. Up rated.
Up rated. All right, what this ordinance does, it allows us to possibly refund bonds that were issued water sewer bonds that were issued from back in two thousand two, twenty-five year bonds, which is why we didn't provide your bond up. But they're still out there. We have, it's pretty high interest rates still, it's like the remaining ones are about four point six percent, because of the tie. Considering we just had a successful bond sale, where the average rate is point nine two. So, because we're kind of like a piggyback walk from the bond sale, we don't have all the insurance costs.
Please, sir.
And what this allows us to do with the financial advisor of law counsel is to see if we can negotiate something with, you know, one of the banks or the investment houses, you know, that's favorable. If this doesn't generate enough savings, you know, we won't proceed with it, but we believe it will. And I think it's the time to do it, because we've just got our rating renewed and we've just, we've just had our, you know, successful bond sale. So we think that, you know, the time to work. It's not going to use savings, but anytime we can have savings, we want to do it, you know? So that's what we're looking to pursue on the, on the bond sale.
What you're technically doing is lowering interest rate.
Right, you want to lower the interest rate, yeah, but it has to be the lowest, and so savings compared to what we would have paid, whatever issuance costs may have, which won't be as high as whatever the bond issuance, you know, with the lower interest rate, and we'll factor those together. And we believe it will generate some savings, so we feel it's the time to do it right now and pursue that, after we just had our bond sale.
That's why we pay. All right, it's been moved and seconded and discussed. Does anybody have any questions? Maverick?
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Ms. Hanson?
Yep.
Mr. Reserve?
Yes.
Mr. Mopera?
Yes.
Mr. Muzin?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
So moved, I mean, yes, so passed six zero.
Public hearing is October fifteenth.
October the fifteenth will be the public hearing. We're trying to save money. We have resolutions in front of us, council. Two thousand eighteen, one seventy-seven, payment of bills. You're all in your package, received a bill list. The public came forward with one question on the bill list. I'm looking for a motion to accept two thousand eighteen, to move two thousand eighteen, one seventy-seven.
You want to move against your man?
Moved by Councilman, uh, Muzin?
Second.
Second by Council President. Discussion.
Yeah, I would like, that public did raise, raised a question, I would like to have a question, actually, I think it's one of the, I think it's one, one company, correct?
That was for our auditor. Yeah, there was a breakdown of costs, and again, this is our new order this year. The twenty-seven five is basically the regular, our regular basic audit that we had all the time. That compares to, I believe, twenty thousand dollars that we paid past ten years or more. We have greatly upped on, up and up. What's a little different this year is, there's a separate charge for the low set manual review. Our low set program, it's not an audit, but there's a review that's done in a separate report that's issued. Federal single audit, if you have over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in federal aid in any given year, now you're required, you are required to have a single audit. We did hit that threshold this year, so. There's a separate report that has to be issued and, you know, to pay the auditor. Really not a lot of money to do that. And additionally, there's a new requirement this year, this is the first year of it for the seventeen audit, was, there's additional procedures required to be done by the auditor reviewing construction code fees and the expenses that associated them. As you know, there are a lot of towns that have taken a lot of money in construction code, but they don't spend money. It's really, it's supposed, it's not supposed to be a big money maker, you know? So the state's, you know, crack it down a little bit and, you know, we'll put a lot of additional information from the orders regarding that. So that's the reason for those extra charges, really, nothing significant, you know, I mean, you know, four hundred fifty dollars, and I'm talking about a lot of money, you know? But there are additional requirements that they had to do this year, so.
So basically what you're telling me is, you reviewed all this and you find other points?
Yeah, I'm very comfortable with that. We're not being, taking advantage of here.
Council, any other questions? Concerned? Maverick?
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Reserve?
Yes.
Mr. Mopera?
Yes.
Mr. Muzin?
Yes.
So carried six zero. We have resolution two thousand eighteen, one seventy-eight, authorizing payment number one, rapid pump and meter service, secondary clarifier, improved... one, rapid pump and meter service, secondary clarifier improvement. Looking for a motion? Move by Councilman Monvera?
Second.
Second by Council President. Discussion. Debbie, would you fill us in on what this is for? This is for the water sewer plant?
This is for the, right, secondary clarifier improvements, and this is the first paper we're making on this. They have begun to.
This is work that was authorized, and this is the first paper.
Yes, yes. This is work that was authorized a long time ago.
Council, have any questions? Really nice when you can just hit the lever and it all works. Madamoral call please.
Mr. Musing?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Missouri?
Yes.
Mr. Monvera?
Yes.
So, so carried six zero. We have resolution two thousand eighteen, one seventy-nine, authorizing payment to Van Cleef Engineering Association. Construction administration and inspection for rehabilitation of East Ward Street. Think this is the one that our business administrator went over there and was happy with the work and asked him to come back and do it, and there had to be some payments made above that, right?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to move it? Moved by Councilwoman Hanson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Monvera. Any discussion or concern? That did turn out better, Debbie, by the way, thank you. Madamoral call please.
Mr. Monvera?
Yes.
Mr. Musing?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Missouri?
Yes.
So carried six zero. We have two thousand eighteen, one eighty, appointing and authorizing an agreement of professional grant writing services, CGP and HLHC. Looking for a motion to move that?
Yes, move.
Moved by Councilman Musing?
Second.
Second by Councilman Monvera. Any discussion or concerns?
No, this was a recommendation of our subcommittee with Councilman Musing and myself. And this, and this is what's on the, which was stated in the executive session, personnel grant writer, so it wasn't, it is an outside company. Excuse me, why? It is an outside company. So, just, I'm.
Madamoral call please.
Mr. Missouri?
Yes.
Mr. Monvera?
Yes.
Mr. Musing?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
So carried six zero. Two thousand eighteen, one eighty-one, urging the state legislator to extend the two percent cap on police and fire arbitration contracts for wars. Looking for a motion? So moved. Moved by Councilman Missouri?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hanson? Any discussion or concern?
I'm a customer.
We have one question.
Fred, how can we extend something that doesn't exist? Wouldn't it be to reinstate it? The two percent cap expired in December. December thirty-first, twenty seventeen, it's gone. So shouldn't this be a resolution urging the legislature to reinstate it rather than extend? How can you extend something that does not exist? I mean, I fully support it.
I think that's a fair point.
And I was upset when they allowed it to sunset, but I was just questioning the personality.
Now, I was going to say, I think that's a fair point, when you use the word reestablished or reinstate. It could be that this was a form resolution that the League of Municipalities circulated to all municipalities for consideration, but there's no problem if the council wants to amend the title of it and any applicable provisions within the resolution accordingly.
Ms. Blue, would you like to amend the title? Please do.
Reinstate?
Reinstate, second.
Reinstate.
Resolution two thousand eighteen, one eighty-one has been amended to read, Ms.
Well, had it already been motioned and seconded?
Yes.
So we need a second on Ms. Blue's motion to amend.
Council President seconded it. Any other further discussion? How is it going to read, Susan?
Urging the state legislature to reinstate the two percent cap on police and fire arbitration contract.
Very good. Okay, okay.
Yes, now you need to vote, I'm going to amend.
Any other concerns? Madamoral call please.
Ms. Hanson? Mr. Missouri?
Yes.
Mr. Monvera?
Yes.
Mr. Musing?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
The amendment passed six zero, now we're going to move the amended ordinance, I mean, amended resolution. Moved by Council President, second by Councilwoman Hanson. Any other discussion on that? See you in the next, Madamoral call please.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Missouri?
Yes.
Mr. Monvera?
Yes.
Mr. Musing?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
So passed six zero. Resolution two thousand eighteen, one eighty-two, endorsing the neighborhood pace car program in the Borough of Hightstown. Looking for a motion?
So move.
Moved by Councilman Monvera?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blue. Any discussion or concerns?
Yes.
Go ahead. This came out of the Subcommittee, the Streets and Sidewalk Subcommittee, we were fortunate, and I'll talk a little bit about it later, to have somebody from Mercer County TMA present at that meeting. Bottom line is, there's a lot of programs and resources and funding available that we could take advantage of for some of the issues we're concerned with, traffic, safety, pedestrians' safety, so this is, this is one of those things, it's just sort of this pace car program where, it's something a lot of us do anyway, we drive the speed limit in our own borough, people palate us, you know, now we'll, now we'll see this, this magnet on our car, realize that, yes, we're driving the speed limit intentionally and stuff. They'll have these, the Mercer TMA is going to be there as well.
They're actually going to roll out the program at our hardest area, yes. Yep.
Any other concerns or questions or comments? Madamoral call please.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Missouri?
Yes.
Mr. Monvera?
Yes.
Mr. Musing?
Yes.
So carried six zero. We have a consent agenda, two thousand eighteen, one eighty-three, four, five, and six. Looking for a motion to move them all into consent. Moved by Councilwoman Hanson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Monvera. Any consent, concerns, questions? See you in the next, Madamoral call please.
Mr. Musing?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Missouri?
Yes.
Mr. Monvera?
Yes.
Consent agenda passed at six zero. Public comment number two, any person wishing to address the mayor at this time will be allowed a maximum of three minutes for his or her comments. Please come forward, give your name and your address, make sure that his feet clear, please.
Sit next to your wife. Doug, Mayor five thirty-six South Main Street, the first item that I would like to discuss is, can we invest in some lapel mics for the council? Councilman Monvera put the microphone in front of Councilman Missouri, and I still couldn't hear him. So, and then when we got the previous speaker to come up, I know they're supposed to be like that, but a lot of people don't, so if we could invest in some lapel mics and climb right to your mouth, and then we can hear everything the council's saying instead of moving microphones that we can't hear. I listened very carefully to the administrator, and she had said, you know, like I understood previously, that once an ordinance is passed, that's the rule, that's the law, and I agree with that. So I was reading an article in a local media source, and in the borough, there are, there are a lot of repair facilities, and they have vehicles that are in some really poor positions, and they have some vehicles that are in areas that they shouldn't be in. So we looked at the ordinance and found out, actually, well, it's all in the article that I read, we actually have an ordinance, twenty-eight dash ten dash twelve, that covers this on vehicles that are left over a hundred and twenty days, and then there's actually a state ordinance that, like, you know, the attorney stated earlier, you don't actually have to put it in your ordinance if it's already there. Well, there's a NJSA thirty-nine, ten eight dash nine that says vehicles left for more than sixty days without your consent, or without the owner paying, or without the owner coming back and pick it up, it's an abandoned vehicle. We have abandoned vehicle ordinances, we have repair facility ordinances. There is one facility that I know of, and I don't want to name anybody, and I don't want to be personal or anything, because there's more than one auto repair facility that's having this problem in the borough, but there's one that has a flatbed truck that's sitting there, front, and it doesn't have a tire, a rim, a hub, brakes or anything, it's just right down to the spindle. And it's interesting because that particular ordinance that we have says that unless it's an emergency, repairs must be done inside of the building, inside of the structure. Well, this vehicle's been sitting here over a year, so I doubt that it would be an emergency, and the vehicle's not even registered or inspected, so I would doubt that it's going to leave anytime soon. So I would encourage, I know there was a few years ago, somebody anonymously, the mayor had stated, either went to his business or his home and dropped a letter in there stating that one of the tow companies that was authorized in the borough to tow didn't have the proper equipment. So I think one of our tow truck companies, they didn't have the big truck tow thing, but I remember they had ordered, they were looking to order a new tow truck, and the mayor said, you know what, we need to put this on as a discussion, and I agree with that, and council decided to go ahead and give that tow company a little extra time to get the equipment so they'd be compliant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I would like, I'd be up there.
I will take care of it, your three minutes are up, sir.
Yeah, I was just, I was hoping I could give a little exercise and so the people would, you know.
No, no, Mr. Mayor, your time is up. Please be seated.
Oh, well, thank you for your.
I will take care of it.
Thank you for your understanding. Thank you, I appreciate it. Scott Castor, I really intend to move the action forward, probably. That means I hope I'm of benefit or help here.
You can't hear you.
You can hear me, Mr. Mayor.
Speaking of.
Really, you can hear me. We've had this discussion about the quality of these microphones. I think you can hear me better than some of us can hear you, with all due respect. I think that, that part of the reason we got screwed up with the definition of bicycling, bicycle, is that we had it right earlier, and then we diffused it by broadening the definition to include tricycles, and there's hoverboards downtown, there, there's weird things downtown. Couple days ago, there was a guy down there with a wheel, one wheel, and a, and like a two-by-four coming out of the wheel, and his dog hold it, and he was on it. So, and this is right down the middle of the sidewalk. So that wasn't two wheels either, it was one wheel. So I don't know how we're going to do it, but I, I really support you all in trying to figure it out. But as you do design this or redesign it, or extend it, or whatever. Please, please, please include all the other vehicles that are on the sidewalks, not just bicycles. And I, thank you, Mr. Musing, for bringing some, a little bit of closure to my question before about transparency, and I think it's misleading to use the word personnel in the context that it was used before. Personnel usually means personnel. And it's not the first time, I've sat in my seat before and kept my mouth shut over, I hope that wasn't just semantics, but it's accuracy, and it's communicating with the public. It's all about transparency, and, Mr. Mayor, you're doing a great job. Sometimes it could be even greater if instead of allowing me to go on, or allowing Doug to go on and on and on, and to hit the three minutes, and maybe even go on, just acknowledge it at the one minute point, and we'll shut up and sit down. Really, it's, it's got to do with just acknowledging, and it works. Thank you.
JB Given, six oh two North Main Street, three items, a second go around here. The first one is that I stand as a resident of the borough and request that in lieu, in light of the fact that we have an election in five weeks, there's a number of people who are, may surprise you, opposing the concept of the new borough complex at the YMCA. In that light, I would strongly request that the borough council not do anything for the next five weeks until after the election, so that you can hear from the voters, and whatever the voters say, pick up at that time and move it forward. It's just a simple request. Item two is, is I was interested, no one said anything on the Van Cleef bill was there, I noticed that there was two components to it, first part of it was designing the project and, and then the oversight and administration of the project on Ward Street, and then finding out that we had to have one of our borough employees go over who found it to be substandard, and then have to go back and have more work done, but that did not stop us from paying one hundred percent of the estimated contract cap that we had established at the beginning of it. If we hired a professional, that professional did not produce accordingly, why the hell did we pay him the full value of it? We should have asked for some type of renumeration, rediscount or something, that's standard business practice. And the third item is that unfortunately, I understand that, that some people will not be available for the League of Women Voters debate because of prior commitments, so therefore, October thirtieth is the last public, open public meeting here, we're going to extend an invitation, I am, to, to the council people, all of you, if you'd like to come, especially the candidates, to meet with the borough residents and have an opportunity to talk to them and ask the questions as a public forum, okay? I thank you for your time, and it wasn't even three minutes. Thank you, JB.
JB, two hundred and fifty-five thirty-six South Main Street. As resident of the borough, I would like to request that election be taken on the YMCA project until after the election, it's a major expense to the residents, and I think that it's something that should be looked at by the new council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Richard Warfield, Seventeen North Avenue, Hightstown. I am currently a board member of the Hightstown of Enchantment, and I'm here to address the city council and the mayor about the amount of traffic that we are encountering on White Hawk Mills Road by the entrance of High, of Enchantment. We've met with the mayor earlier in the year, we asked him if there was any help he could give us, I think you were going to look into putting stop signs up for us at the entrance so that the trucks or some of the traffic would at least stop or slow down for some of the pedestrians that walk across the street. Well, we're an adult community, a lot of people like to walk into town, go to a restaurant, go to the post office, you know, go to a library. All right, they're fifty-five and over, some are seventy-five, they can't walk that fast across the street. These trucks, and now especially with the new warehouse down on, on White Hawk Mills Road, makes it a hazard trying to cross that street. I'm asking the council, county council, and the mayor to help, and maybe at least, I have a copy of a street pedestrian signs, the cost is three hundred sixty-nine dollars for one, if you put two up on each crossroad, I'm sure we can avoid anybody being hurt or injured by being hit by a truck or car. If you'd like to see this, I will give a good point.
I've already researched it, you can't do it.
You can't do that.
This type of sign.
Yeah, that type of sign, yes.
Yes. I thought you were looking at regular stop signs.
No, I'm just looking for something.
We had investigated stop signs, but we cannot do that, you cannot use stop signs for traffic.
I think that is.
Thank you.
Good evening, Milton Morris from the five thirty street. First thing, again, credibility, a few months ago, I came over here, also mentioned credibility where we voted to a budget, even though we didn't like the budget, and then we voted on, say, yes, and then we blamed the public for not showing up to the meetings, so that's the public for not showing up to the meetings, so that's why you guys voted yes. And now tonight, I see another issue of credibility, Mrs. Blunt, this bicycle idea that Mr. Castor has been bringing forward for about five years, bring it up to the public to approve it and then yet table it. So where are you being for five years? To read all this statement that was written about bicycles and, and all this beautiful reading that also promoted the lawyer to say yes on tabling the motion. You know, it should have been brought up four years ago. Now because it's election time. And the second is also, as a resident of Hightstown, I would like to ask that we tabled the YMCA project until after elections. I'm pretty sure that the public would like to be involved in the YMCA project, especially after, after knowing that there was a, a meeting regarding police and court contract that we promised we would probably, and my sending us a resident of Hightstown was that the police and court was going to be part of the YMCA, so right now I'm very confused and I'm pretty sure a lot of residents of Hightstown are very confused about it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mo. Anybody else? Closing public comment number two. We're going into discussion. Do we have anything tonight? No discussion stuff. Can the committee report? Steve. Law Committee?
Yeah, the sidewalk committee. Can you hear me, Scott? I'm comfortable without getting too close to it. All right. So, so the streets and sidewalk, and we had the Greater Mercer TMA attend, a couple of representatives from them, Leon Henderson, Jerry Foster. They, they talked about a bunch of programs they could help our committee with that have to do with, well, first, before I get into that, one thing that was discussed, there's another related committee that's working on bicycle, you know, come up with a bicycle plan to tie into the Mercer County bike plan that eventually ties into the whole state bike plan. And what we're applying for, what this committee's applying for is a grant to do a mobility plan. And the mobility plan will include both bicycle mobility and pedestrian mobility throughout the borough. Now that we have a grant writer, Bev Asness Stein took the grant application really as far as she's comfortable and I think, I think Princeton did the same thing, they applied the same type of grant and were awarded that grant. So she modeled our application on theirs, but it probably needs a couple hours of a grant writer just to make sure everything's typed and so, so we should talk about that now that we have a grant writer on board. I know we have some budget money for plans and stuff like that is the future discussion. So moving on to the Greater TMA, they can, they brought up a walkability audit and it's sort of something we've been doing already on our own, identifying key intersections and dangerous crossings and trying to identify the problems and then suggest solutions. They'll bring a team, they have a whole program to do this, so we're going to, I've been in touch with Debbie about this already. They're willing to bring their team to work with us. What they would want to see is not only residents and council representatives, but also representatives from the police department, public works, anybody that could provide information and insight into different issues regarding, regarding mobility and public safety. So, so that's something we're working on. Other things they talked about was, let's see, they have something called the Street Smart Pedestrian Campaign and it's sort of just this, they have signs, they have flyers and it's just, I guess, an awareness type of campaign that they could provide us material for if we ever wanted to do that. We talked about a program called Cops in Crosswalks and they mentioned that there's grant money available from the state police and it's basically a program where you can get a grant and it'll pay for whatever, to, to run this... Sort of like the Seethills campaign and the click it or take it where there's grant money to pay the overtime or whatever we need for officers to run this program for about a week. And it's sort of like a sting operation. You'll have one officer crossing this, you know, crossing in a crosswalk, have a, you know, a couple of people staked down, staked out down the road, so when they violate the law, they could get pulled over and take it in, which is sort of a one or two week list to try to take care of this problem in the borough. People just don't seem to want to stop or even yield for pedestrians in crosswalks. So that's something we'll look into more. The pace part, pace, pace, say that, pace car program. We already talked about that and that came out of that meeting, so, so yeah, that's sort of what was talked about, but that's something. We don't have another meeting date scheduled, but I'll let you know when you do.
Thank you, Dave. Scott.
I just wanted to say that I went to the streets and sidewalk subcommittee meeting after the fair meeting and thought it was really educational, a lot of benefits and I hope to keep working with the Greater TMA.
Have I did a report on Lincoln?
Yeah, the, other than we have to bond money to start doing work, to do site work or have Carmel's firm begin in work, that's the next step that we have to do with council on some of it. I already brought it to our administrative section.
It'll be on the next, the bond ordinance will be on the next agenda. Thank you. It's important, those trees are bad shape over there. We've got to get somebody in there that, that knows something about those trees. Hundred-year-old trees and it's not... Anybody else? Any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to mayor and council administrative reports. We'll start over here with Susan.
At the last meeting, I mentioned that I didn't have the figures for Parks and Rec Triathlon I do now. They had 225 participants and their net profit was just shy of $10,000. Cultural Arts will have two spots at this Saturday's Harvest Fair. Adam Welch will do as he's done in the past and host a ceramic making demonstration. At another spot, we will have people there with easels, with large-sized posters and on the posters, on one poster, there's going to be images of the O's. If you recall, they made a presentation to council, possible mural to go in town. So on one, on one poster, they're going to have images of murals and on another poster, they're going to invite the public to write down their ideas on a Post-it note or draw images of what they would like to see on a mural. So it's a great opportunity for community engagement in that project. They've set a date for this coming, this year's, actually next year, 2019. Empty Gold, please put it on your calendar, March 23rd, which is a Saturday. Again, at Petty, it's going to be a little different this year. There's going to be a huge focus on hunger and in terms of partnering, there could be a change in partners. It could be one, two, three. More information to follow as I get it. And Joint Project Pianos, that's a joint project between Cultural Arts and Parks and Rec. We just received two more pianos. As a matter of fact, they had to hire a Segway moving company to transport them. One came from Monroe Village and another one came from Millstone. The one from Monroe Village is Baby Grand and that will be, once it is painted, will be going into Memorial Park because the one that's in there now apparently has reached its limit. And the one from Millstone, when that one is done, will be going into Doris Park.
Thank you. Montfort.
Well, I just wanted to say that I have a really good feeling about the town when you see an organization like I Care Start after tragedies have struck. Get a really good feeling and I can't wait to keep supporting them. Board of Health, we meet, I think, in two weeks and the Harvest Fair committee has been so busy this year because next year it'll be a little more easier to run with everything becoming more fluid and deadlines being set earlier. So this year we put in a lot of work and now the run, running the fair should be a lot more easier next year, but I think we're totally prepared. I think Sheila's done a great job as chair and I think it's going to be a great fair on Saturday. Make sure you get downtown. I know one big change this year is that the food trucks are going to be in front on Stockton Street instead of in the rear by, I think they were two spread out last year and it looks like good weather so far, so. And, oh, and then of course, our environmental commission, they've been really busy. They've been doing a lot of work too, really tapping on work. So not, next meeting, I would ask if council would put a discussion item on for the November meeting regarding the storm, updating stormwater ordinance and considering a tree ordinance, which the environmental commission will actually comment and present about the ordinance. They have a preliminary draft that I'm impressed with and I think that council should really consider. And I also thought something that was interesting was their idea for like a professional hourly environmental engineer on projects that are kind of out of Carmel's scope of work typically, if someone would be like essentially on call if needed to consult on, on work and what the hourly rate would be. And there hasn't been any movement on the green development checklist from the planning board, so if we could follow up with that with the planning board on, on your meeting next week, I think. And that's it for the environmental commission. And fair, oh, if anyone wants the fair, like a fair map from council, I got it here for you. And then again, the board of health next week is going to consider that code regarding the licensure for taking.
Mayor Carter, I thought you were going to be busy. Thank you. Missouri.
The only thing additional I have is on the 19th, I attended the first aid squad meeting. They are going to look at their logs. I shared with them a list of the number of calls that they answered that maybe provided with us, provided to us. They seemed to question it and they were going to check their own logs to see if they matched up. They asked that I verify with Bevy that when they say the Hightstown calls that, you know, we have the shared service with Robbinsville and Robbins, you know, that provider answers the vast majority of our calls and we have it broken down on that list as you saw, which ones are in Hightstown. So we just wanted to verify that they're saying, when they say Hightstown, they just don't mean blanket, only five, two others. And I, I think we're pretty comfortable that it is, is what I got, so we'll see where that goes.
Thank you very much. Additional information. Mr. Musing.
Mayor.
The microphone.
All right. First of all, Doug, I'd like to say I'm sorry to hear what happened. I wish you the speediest and best recoveries, possible for recovery, so just a little of that. DHPC met, unfortunately I was not able to be there. I had physical therapy due to surgery, but they're moving ahead. Some plaques were discussed as every year houses should be picked up, we're going to need residents in the town that have done an excellent job in upkeep or improvement and that has now gone through the process and some suggestions have come forward and I think I'm looking forward to moving on with that process and getting to people and actually recognizing the people who actually make a big difference in the town with their, you know, everything, everything matters, little things, property maintenance, et cetera, big improvements, so we like to honor those, so I think that's a very good, very good thing. We ran into a bit of a problem with the, with the flag. It seems like the hardware that was sent doesn't go around with the JCKN posts. So that's quite frustrating and disappointing. You know, it's a, they had to go through a process, through JCKN, et cetera, et cetera, and that's one thing, you know, that was, you know, that was a, the data was sent twice. So we're reaching out to the company and I think we'll have to get different ones or figure some way out an answer, but that, that, it's an obstacle that can be overcome. It is unfortunate, but unfortunately that happens and that never installed neither has anybody in the group who's told those things, so we find those out by doing it. Regarding contract negotiations and framework, I think it's a bit, I don't know, I, I think really everybody knows, and there was even a memorandum of understanding, what, what the court and police department contract negotiations are. There are problems though. That has been done, that has been set in an open session, so, you know, I understand that you can, you know, you can question things, it's not a problem, but, but we try to be, I think as a council, we honestly try to be NR, not try, but we are transparent in everything we do. I can honestly say that. So to say what, you know, what a court and police department negotiates is problematic. So I hope that answers that question. Let me see here. I'm glad we tabled the bicycling ordinance and honestly, I don't really know, I think there's a couple things wrong with that. I wrote a note last time that I still think that it's not in our interest to tell our kids that they have to drive in the street. I think the street is too dangerous, so I have a personal problem with that, but that's neither here nor there. And I hope we look forward to getting that resolved and then moving it forward. The one thing I think people have to understand too, as far as I know, we cannot, as a legislator, we're a legislative body. We, we can write ordinances, we can write laws, but we cannot enforce the law. We cannot direct our police to enforce day-to-day activities. That's just how it is. Three branches of government, that's how you go look at it. Now, since I'm addressing some public comments, regarding the women's league, I plan on being And when you question, one of the public questions, credibility and confusion that might be done by government of any sort, really. You know, that's a great thing about United States of America, you're allowed to do that with the First Amendment. But because you question something does not make it reality either. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Ms. Hanson.
I'm going to pass.
Thank you very much. Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Housing Authority, I was not even, as I mentioned at our last council meeting, when the date changed, I was away, but I am looking forward to the next one, I believe it's on the 17th. The next... The next downtown Heitstown business group that meets in the mornings, the next meeting is actually the morning of our next council meeting. They've been moving on some new ideas for events coming up. They've also put together a slideshow for businesses to put up in their window, I talked about it at the last, the last meeting, to put basically a slideshow of other businesses and promotions and events that happen in the downtown. Actually, the idea came from Legends Barber Shop, and it seemed to be well-received, it's just a matter of getting the monitors to be put up in the businesses. The dumpster enclosures that we've talked about in past council meetings, as spoke to Ken Lewis from Public Works, he had gotten only one quote from a fencing company.
I had a hard time getting people to come in.
Can't get fencing companies to come out, and so he told me last week, he's getting a local mason to give him a quote to install the walls around the enclosures as a concrete block, which actually was what I wanted in the first place, because they'll last longer, the gates that are gonna go on the front won't fall off as easily, and so I will update when I get more information on that. The only comment, I, there was, Doug, you had mentioned the signage up in the upper parking lot not being installed yet. It is installed, and further to that, we had added a time limit. You might not have been aware that, we looked at, after the signs went up, about permit parking only. We further looked at it, noticed that a lot of time after five or six o'clock during the week, and then on weekends, no one's in those lots, because it said permit only. So we added and revised the ordinance to put a time of that, and those have been affixed to those signs. I do believe you're right that at the entrance to the lot, the sign is still faded, and I will check with Kenny on that, and he did mention to me that they, they did not deliver the appropriate number, there might have been one other one. So it's on its way, and then what downtown Heitstown is in the process of doing is creating a graphic on the aerial that sort of highlights, maybe goes on the Borough website also, but also on the downtown Heitstown page. Kim from Forget Me Not did the same thing, and Fernandez does this, that you highlight where the parking is, it could be different colors, it says this lot is permit only, but after these hours, so that there's more of an awareness out there. And then the businesses have all been made aware of it downtown, that those spots have been open for after-hours and, most importantly, weekends. It's like forty spots that people can't use now that that's been designated. We just need to go a little further in getting the word out on it. And then, again, this, the actual signage for the bicycles, I did see them, I actually found an example out in California that was more of a graphic as well, it's called Walk Your Wheels on the Sidewalk, and has a little diagram, it's not the typical bicycle with the X through it. It shows people walking a bicycle, holding a skateboard, and walking a scooter, so you can literally see it, what it is, and then the ordinance number, when we eventually get whatever that is, will be at the bottom. So they're, they're getting prices on that, but, you know, obviously, none of this is tabled. I would like to be able to bring that back to council as part of the next discussion and show what it looks like for people who may not have seen it. But that's, that's all I got. And the police liaison, the chief, all he wanted me to say tonight is to let people know, if you haven't seen already, the new stop sign at the intersection in front of the high school, that we recently approved at the council level to make a four-way stop. The sign was installed, but it's been covered over, because they need to get a traditional, trying to get use of a temporary electronic sign. We did this with the intersection of Ward and South Main, to alert people that in the next month, this stop sign's gonna be there, because if you just take it off one day, people are gonna drive through it. So there's this notification that happens ahead of the intersection, that he's trying to get that piece of equipment, and also the crosswalk, there's some striping that needs to be painted, the stop line at that particular spot also. So you'll see the sign there, it has like a piece of, looks like a, like a piece of fabric over it, but that's, it's on its way, but that's, that's what he wanted me to report tonight. And looking forward to the Harvest Fair, and thanks for all the public comments, you know, that's what we're here for. And again, emails work well too, but thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Sounds like you've been pretty busy also. Debbie, you have anything for us?
I do have one item. Any comments and questions about the price of the freeway walking bridge? Evidently, people have it out there, that it's an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar bridge, million-dollar bridge. I'd just like to do some clarification, because of the questions I've received. I have changed the press release that's on the website, and it cites exactly what I'm gonna tell you now. The bid on the bridge came in at $408,575.84. We have received a grant in the amount of $374,450. And we also, I applied for, an engineering grant that awarded us $121,215 for inspections and contract administration on the project. So, we are, the estimate, the original estimate for the bridge was $374,571.25. So we are short like $34,000 to cover this project 100% with grants. I have sent a letter to DOT requesting that money. So whether we're receiving it or not is yet to be seen, but I just want to clarify, because of the phone calls I'm getting and the people coming to the office, "What is this, an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar bridge?", the information out there is wrong, it is incorrect. The information and the figures I gave you just now are exact. So if you have any questions, instead of talking to a neighbor who might not have the right information, please give our office a call or come in, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have got to deal with it.
Okay? So I just wanted to make that clear. That's it.
Did we ever get the signature from DOT as we're doing that?
We're still waiting for that, but there is dialogue going back and forth, they had a couple questions, and they've gotten their answers, so we're just waiting.
Does one signature hold the whole mail, right?
Yeah, well, it's basically, what is holding it up right now is the, we've awarded it, but you need their approval for federal funding. DOT has approved it, but the federal also has to approve it, so there's two approvals that are required, and that's why we're waiting for the second approval.
We're about to get it.
No, the engineer, engineering funds are approved, it's currently awarded to construction.
We might get to see that.
I meant to tell you related to DOT that I called someone in Benson about the blinking light in the middle of the high school. I just called again, so I'm just gonna wait myself.
Their chief of staff has been emailing with me on DOT repeatedly.
Yeah, well, school started and it's not installed, so.
I understand that, but they have stepped in and they are helping us, just so you know, it's daily communication between me, them, and DOT, so.
Did they cash on the check?
Oh, DOT, they haven't been paid yet.
Didn't we pay them half?
No, we haven't, in a bond.
Oh, okay.
But we, we haven't paid them yet, I should pay for work until it's completed.
Thank you, you have anything for talk?
Just the Harvest Fair, Harvest Fair has a final meeting tomorrow night, like Connor said, they're very organized this year and ready to go, so I think it's gonna be a good turnout, hopefully. Just busy in the clerk's office, getting ready for now year-end stuff, dog licenses and stuff to be coming out, taxi licenses, so kind of just getting ready for the year-end stuff, all right.
Thank you for working with our auditors. It was a long process this year.
They were very thorough, and it was an educational experience.
When you deal with a new company like that, it's something else. George, you have anything for us?
No, just played yours over, that was a replica of my time in Montpelton, I had to diversify it, and we're moving along, trying to get, again, year-end of the year, start looking at next year's budget, yeah, a lot of things like that.
The audit process is amazing, they go through, but it's a mess, it's a mess.
Oh, yeah, and you get a different perspective from different people, so it was good.
It's amazing how one company can decide something, doing things the other company can do. It's amazing. Fred, you have anything for us?
Nothing right now, man.
Thank you for your help tonight, I mean, I really appreciate it.
I have to thank my council for all the hard work that they've put in, we have a lot of issues going on at one time. Got catch, I said that it couldn't be done, I, what do you want me to do, I don't ever remember saying such a thing. We do have a few lawyers in the audience, it's good, keep us straight. Scott, we are still working on the bicycles, and we will continue to work on it until we get it. I will say that I have spoken with the chief many times, and I told him, and Doug Merrill, appreciate this a little bit, but I have told the chief many times, even though the law is there, you can write on the law, I think it's best to have the signs up, because most of the people we are dealing with are residents. So I would prefer, and I've told the chief this, that I prefer that the signs be up before they're written, but I have no problem with them warning them that it's coming and pay attention to it. That's exactly the way I handle it. Like I said at the end of the meeting, I'm not gonna order the signs until we have an ordinance, you know what I mean, we need an ordinance, so. I do see bikes on the sidewalk, there's a portion of our community that uses bicycles for transportation to and from work, to and from school. We'll get on top of it, they keep looking at it until we get it right. That's it, I have no other comment, I'm looking for a motion, good job. My councilman, Montaire.
Sir.
Thank you, my council president. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.